Welcome, members of the Concord School Committee meeting. I'll be chair tonight in the absence of Chairman Boyden. And apologize for being a few minutes late. So, do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Let's move to recognitions. CMS Homebase.
Good evening.
Come on.
Good evening. Join us.
So, in the absence of Lori Hunter, our superintendent school, who happens to be at Carlisle at this very minute, we would like to take the unprecedented act of staging a friendly takeover of the school committee. So, I would like to introduce almost all of my members of my homebase, my advisory group, that would love to just take your chairs for the next 10 or 15 minutes and take reins of the district.
Take my chair.
This is what happens with my boss, Lori.
Well done, guys. Alright, takeovers.
I think they're in shock of how quickly you gave up the control and power of the district. So, we thought there would be no better way to present just how special Homebase is to all of us and the impact it has. Homebase is an acronym, B-A-S-E. We have a team of teachers, who are new school committee chair, will be introducing in just a couple of minutes. But we thought of no other way to develop and foster a relationship between our school committee and our school, to really just have presence, my homebase, a group that I meet with almost daily, every day but Tuesday throughout the school year. Homebase is our advisory program. And there's not much more that I'm gonna say because we have a team of teachers. We started Homebase about two years ago that's going to be making a quick presentation to all of you. So, I'm gonna turn it over to a new school committee chair. Listen, I can introduce our teachers.
The first teacher is Ms. Frizzell.
Be sure to speak into your microphone.
Okay. The second teacher is Ms. Knacki. And the third teacher is Ms. Efty.
I don't know. I'm so used to standing, I don't know.
Well, you have to get your computer.
It's right here.
We're just gonna get this plugged up.
Alright. Alright, so, I think we're gonna just sort of take turns and swap in and out and obviously join me whenever I'm struggling with what to explain what's going on. So, about two and a half, three years ago, as teachers, we sort of were seeing a need for more contact, kids with adults. We were looking at kids and they just seemed to really be craving more time with us. We were looking at a lot of survey and data that kept saying kids were stressed out, they were anxious, they were nervous. And we definitely saw it in our classrooms and we saw it with our kids. So, we got together and started to think about different ways that we could address that, ways that we could give kids a chance to engage with teachers and give everybody, not just teachers but administrators, an opportunity to just have a group of kids for a short amount of time. And we felt strongly that the, you know, just giving teachers time with a small group, that that would allow for sort of nice relationships and bonding to form and for kids just to have someone that they could connect with on a daily basis, someone that, you know, with a smiling face that they knew that they could see. Did I cover it? So, yeah, so it really was all about social emotion.
So, we really started thinking about how we were going to do this and how we wanted to implement it. And I remember at the time being handed a couple of different advisory books for different programs that already existed. And I flipped through them and I was like, "Nope, that doesn't work. We don't want that. That doesn't work for us." So, after figuring out kind of that we needed this, we talked a lot about what this would look like and how this would look particularly at CMS, with two different buildings, with traveling teachers who go between the buildings, just with the makeup of our specific school. And it really was a lesson in patience to start, to be quite honest. Really creating a vision for what this could look like and building consensus among the staff of why we actually needed this and why this was gonna be beneficial to student learning, to student health, and really student growth and well-being overall. So, once we were able to kind of convey that message and really get the staff on board, I think we had surveyed the staff a million different times.
There were 16 surveys.
And, you know, to the point that we had overwhelming consensus, of over 80% of the staff saying, "We need to do this and we're on board." And so then at that point, it was acknowledging the challenges. Okay, how do we sit down and we look at a schedule that is very complex and we make this work across the board for all students, across the board for all faculty members? Once we worked through the development of the logistics, it was playing with the curriculum. And that's kind of where we really focused on this Homebase idea. The B, the A, S, and E, feeling like all of these were relevant and necessary in our curriculum. So, as Justin spoke about, the V is the bullying-proofing curriculum. We developed our own curriculum that addresses what we saw as issues of bullying within CMS or issues that we felt were most relevant to be addressed. So, for example, we worked with guidance to develop case studies, particular to our school, that our children could relate to. The academic advising, obviously, that was... We used to have a homeroom of 30 different kids and you'd try to help them or address their needs academically and it was just too overwhelming in nine minutes to do so. Obviously, the social emotional lessons and needs that are very relevant with numerous students throughout the, you know, the district. And I remember Kristin Herbert saying that that was one of our kids' most important needs at this time in their development. And then the last one is, we just wanted to have some fun. So, the entertainment, the fun, we've done a number of ridiculous things. Last year, the whole eighth grade had a lip-synching contest that every single child participated in just to build community in that one.
And the way we developed this, so what we ended up with, with the B-A-S-E, those are focused on a lot during these 30-minute extended times that we have about every other week. So, that usually happens on Thursdays. But really, we, you know, we also meet with them on a pretty much a daily basis for the shorter times, for nine minutes, just to check in. So, we always get more check-in. What really mattered to us was to have small groups, so 10 to 12. We really didn't want it to be any higher than that and we've been able to maintain that. Just about every single staff member in the building is a part of this. So, we have everybody connected with kids and everybody is a part of these small group studies. So, we really think that's an important aspect of how it works. And, okay, so a little bit of our ridiculous fun. We have a quick little video we can show you of last year's initial initiative, which was called the Ball Pit Challenge. Now, you will all be part of the next one, which is this Catalyst for Change we're doing this year. So, this video last year shows a little about how we wanted to just build this community and get kids connected to each other in our first initiative.
Oh, it looks like it did. We gotta go out of the...
That's out of there, so we'll hit the link.
Homebase is basically an advisory, our personal form of advisory.
We took a large homeroom of around 30 kids and we divided it pretty much into three.
So that each kid would have a person, an adult in the building. That would be their adult to connect with and to engage with.
The youth behavioral risk survey and challenge success survey. Some of that data really suggested that schools in the area need programs that build and foster relationships between adults and students, but also work on opportunities for students at this age to just have time to be kids and to have some fun.
And then also to sort of get some of the curriculum out there around bullying, around just connecting, social emotional, dealing with, you know, bringing down anxiety and just giving kids a place to vent, kind of. A Homebase.
They seem excited about it. They actually request more time.
So, during the month of October, which is anti-bullying month...
Students partake in bullying-proofing challenges.
All month long, during student lunches, students came down and took a seat in the ball pit and made new friends, both in more than puberty.
Well, the ball pit was an idea that came out of something we saw in Soul Pancake. And it was a way to get kids talking to each other, kids that don't normally talk. In the video on Soul Pancake...
They invited strangers from the streets, two strangers, to sit in the ball pit and much like we did here at the middle school, the two strangers sat in the ball pit and picked up a ball pit ball and asked a question of each other.
To start the activity, the students watched the video and talked about the impact of, you know, taking a seat in a ball pit with somebody you don't know and how you could find coming around and find things that maybe you wouldn't have known at those.
Ball Pit Project provides an opportunity for students to have fun but also build connections with adults and students as well.
So, even eight years from now, I know these kids so well, I've seen them forever. They don't always know each other after that as they maybe think they do. They've made assumptions about kids or they form peer groups, but this gets tearing down some of those walls.
And I think it's been really impactful. I think it's been fun for the kids and I think it forces them to put themselves out there in a really safe environment.
So, hi stranger.
Hello, what's your name?
Adelise. Give each other a well wish and smile. Here you are. What's your favorite color and why?
Really, really light purple. I don't know why I like that color.
I like red. It's the first color in the rainbow.
What's your worst injury?
I slightly sprained my ankle before.
I ate vanilla on top of cupcakes.
Vanilla. What's your favorite?
I like your fur.
Would you travel to the medicine?
Yes, I would.
What would you do?
I'll take pictures.
Do you care about popularity?
A little bit. I just care about how I would look in the morning.
What is the most daring thing you've ever done?
When I was in Oregon, I jumped off like this huge Georgia.
Yeah, I know.
No, Seattle.
I went to England and I've been to Asia.
Who is your favorite cartoon character?
Take Ben Jerry, my favorite cartoon character. What scares you?
Um, I hate swimming with fish frequently.
I like to ride horses. Yeah, I like to hang out with my friends.
Playing Yu-Gi-Oh! and playing with my cat.
I like cats.
Who is your favorite superhero?
Wonder Woman.
What's your favorite food?
Artichokes. I don't know why.
Yes, I do like Boston, Boston's superhero.
I really don't like food pie. Like apple pie?
Uh, probably ice cream.
What makes you proud?
I like seeing my friends succeed. Like, you know, you know how those people are like, "Oh, like she got his 10. I'm so jealous." I'm proud of them.
If you're an animal, what would you be?
A cat, because I can sleep on it.
A possum. I want to be a possum.
I think I'd be a dog, because dogs are always really happy. And they get to sleep all day, so...
I'd be an eagle, because I always want to fly.
Oh, yeah, same.
Science is a lot of fun, but I have to go with English.
Um, I would just science.
Oh, yes, science is a lot of fun.
Yeah, because it gives you a lot of experience. Most of them are pretty fun.
Do you like being in the ball pit?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, it's fun, it's hot.
The first day that we offered it to them, I went to the cafeteria to see who was interested if they wanted to go to the ball pit. And literally, every single handicap was raised and they were ready to dive in.
It's been going very well. The demand has not really diminished.
So, at this point, we're closing the month and I think almost every child who has... Actually, I can say every child who's want to participate has had a chance to do so.
It is just as exciting to see the students respond to that opportunity here at the end of the month of October as it was in the beginning of the month as well.
They just think the whole thing is crazy and I think they'd enjoy the fact that they learn things about each other that they wouldn't have if they were just sitting across the cafeteria from each other. So, that's a great thing.
So, you get a basic idea of what our kickoff was last year. This year, our Catalyst for Change asks kids to think about ways in which they, as ordinary citizens of Concord, can be a catalyst for change in a positive way in CMS. And what we've done, actually, we've created Plinko boards, if you've ever watched the Price is Right. And with the Plinko boards, it's essentially a PBIS model in which children by being themselves or doing things in their everyday can earn catalyst chips. And those catalyst chips earn them a chance at the Plinko board and a chance to win things like Student of the Week, Pi, Mr. Cameron, you know, different...
You guys have that idea. Don't be graced up.
So, that's our kickoff for this year. And really just these fun events to get kids invested and involved in the community.
I was saying, you guys will do the ball pit when you're ready.
Yeah.
Bring it back.
So, just a couple anecdotes about, you know, feedback we've received from staff. So, just the other day, we were meeting in small affinity groups as staff members. And we were talking about just an individual's inclination to kind of drift to or join people that they feel they have similarities to or commonalities to. And we were talking about what our role is as educators in the building, to expose children to people that they maybe didn't otherwise get a chance to know or a chance to experience. And just like the ball pit that reinforced that same idea, but one of the staff members said, "I think this is exactly what we do with Homebase." She explained how her Homebase, because when we create the Homebases, the students are at random. And she said she had a number of kids from different social groups, from different peer groups. And she found that one child specifically in the Homebase came forward and said, "You know, I'm kind of not fitting in with any of my peers right now, struggling socially." And her Homebase had become so connected in such a unit that they said, "You know, I saw you alone at lunch. Why don't we just all eat lunch together from now on?" And then from that point forward, her Homebase, which had very, you know, different and unique styles, they all kind of came around and supported this kid. And so, I think that's really a pretty clear anecdote of what we're trying to create and what's been created in just a year at this point.
And I would even say that's not unusual.
No.
Like, I think we all, any of us coaches could share stories along those lines, which is great. So, here's just some of the data, because we did survey the kids after the first year. Eight out of 10 kids said they didn't get to know a classmate that they wouldn't have connected with otherwise. 81% said, "We want more time." So, that was the interesting thing about Homebase, is they just want more time in Homebase. They want more time with that adult, interacting and in small groups, because I think they feel safe there. And 59% say they will now go to a teacher for help with a problem. And that was one of the numbers that were... Was on the lower side. They were just so used to going to guidance. And now, a lot of the kids will say, "You know, now I know I have other people that I can also go to if I have a class," which is a great thing.
So, we have a few other quotes. As we asked, we asked the kids to, at the end of the year, to share a thanks, some appreciation. And so, we got some quotes from them. So, just share a couple. But, "Homebase has been such a fun experience because of you. I hope the kids who get you next year feel the same way I'm written to the coach. It helped me to get better at understanding others. I loved being able to see you twice a day instead of only once. You thought of great Homebase activities and we always had funny, thoughtful discussions afterwards. You guys are the best Homebase coaches ever. You're always so happy and really care about what I have to say. You're not only great coaches, but great friends. And bonding with kids I might not have in Homebase, thank you for being my coach through sixth grade." Just some of their words.
This is your Shark Tank, over here. You wanna add?
Questions?
Questions?
From your two weeks of Homebase.
Nope.
Now, if I could just take a minute to recognize these three adults and the work that they've accomplished in the last couple of years. One of the things that I'm most proud of is this is a homegrown program. And I really believe innovation is really fostered when you don't necessarily go out and purchase something or get a consultant to come in and share with us how something is supposed to look or, you know, how it's supposed to go. This is innovation at its finest. The work that they're looking to accomplish, they started last year and accomplished this year, is aligning all of what they've done, that is grassroots, to research, practice. Actually, they already did that. But to aligning it to... What's the program?
Castle.
Yeah, Castle, which is a program that we're working with Kristin on as well. Because the anti-bullying curriculum actually does have to be a state-endorsed program. So, that's part of the reason to align ourselves with Castle. But again, this is innovation at its finest. Last year, we had an opportunity to really present... The whole student body presented these three adults with a big Homebase, an actual Homebase, that all the staff signed. You know, in my 19 years in education, I don't know of another teacher group that has affected change so positively and really gone in the direction... My goodness, you've seen three principals in three years, three and a half years that you have brought this from off the ground. And that speaks, you know, remarkable things about the work that's done at the middle school.
Thank you.
So, before we relinquish the power, I do think, gosh, Wally, you've never looked younger and better with that new diet you're on. Our school committee chair might have a motion before we finish.
As Chair of the Concord School Committee, I motion to the immediate installation of central air conditioning at both Sandoval and MP. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. John, thanks.
I'm sure there'll be some days in the future where we'd be calling on you to stand up here again.
Wally's got a tough act to follow now.
That was great.
Thank you, guys.
And, Homebase seems like an amazing program. And just exactly what we need these days. Thank you.
Justin, I think we can echo your thanks to the teachers for the innovation. For how many years have we asked the question of children, "Do you have an adult in your sphere with whom you can talk that you trust?" One of your slides refers to the... This adult is one that you can go to. Those were the words. And what this program has done is made that trip to go to a teacher much shorter, which has to have tremendous value. Thank you.
And that, you know, that extends past the teachers, too. You know, one of the data points of child success two years ago when we surveyed the students, it's under 1% felt connected to the administration. And that was one of the first data points I saw in coming in. So, to have Homebase in place when I came in just provided that opportunity. I remember sitting with Karen Baker and just, you know, she gave me a laundry list. This was the first time we met. And I was just, you know, my eyes were this big. I said, "What advice do you have?" And she said, "We need to create space for the kids." And Homebase did that for me. And, you know, this is a Homebase that I'm just starting to get to know. But I had to re-kick my Homebase of last year. Tell me just today that we want to do a Homebase reunion. Well, you know, I'm on time for that Homebase sometime next week. We're gonna do a special lunch thing soon.
That's great.
That's really neat.
And to sort of follow on what Corb was saying, you know, we try to foster this high school. And the sooner we get kids comfortable with this notion, the more effective that's gonna be when they get to the high school and the problem's a little larger and the stress is a little higher. And it will be interesting to follow kids through as they get into high school and see, you know, if that process is a little easier for everybody. My hope is it will be. Thank you. I think I neglected to point out that this is being recorded. I know we do. So, this is being recorded. Chairs and liaisons reports. No chair report. Anybody have anything they want to mention to us?
Most of it's yet to kick into gear for the year.
I do know that there was a meeting of PTG presidents. I don't, I didn't have a report from that. I wasn't there. Is there anything you want to mention about that?
I mean, you know, those meetings are always interesting because each school PTG president's and co-presidents make comments about what's going on in terms of their own initial startup programs for the new year. So, it's very exciting to hear, you know, the involvement of these individuals in getting things started and doing a lot of fundraising and various programs drawing new parents into the establishment. And I think that's to their credit.
Yeah, to everyone's work. Thank you. Anything else? Seems we all seem to be stepping up a little tiny. Do you want to talk about superintendent's report?
Yeah.
Sure. The agenda's actually blank, so...
Just to put you on the spot.
Yeah. So, opening of school. The first six days of school ran smoothly and fluidly, as I expected the schools. It felt as if we've been in session for months, not days. The exception would be a result of high temperatures and humidity that the middle school must manage without climate control. Despite the rental of large fans, the environment is less than ideal for maximizing instruction. This would be a situation monitor for the rest of the year. Transportation, we've had some minor issues. But through transportation department, they've been in good contact with the community, making phone calls to parents. We asked that the community, the first two weeks are always the toughest every single year, and we adjust some routes. But by, you know, the, the second month, we expect some of the runs to be as much as ten minutes quicker. That's what we're hoping for. So, we try, and it's important to point out that we transport over thirty-six hundred students on a hundred and fifty runs each day, which is, which is pretty unbelievable. So on October twenty-third and October twenty-fourth, we had thirty teachers for new teacher orientation. So I know that went really well. That was, that was really fun. I was not here for it, but I heard a lot about it, and I think it went really well. We also had a leadership retreat on August twentieth through the twenty-second, three days. We focused on a number of leadership components, the strategic plan. We also, I explained my zero-based budget approach to some big eyes, but I think people are starting to understand it and start to buy into it. So that was, that was excellent. And we're also currently in the process of finalizing some other parts of the school improvement plans. I know that we're even working on that today with the principals. So that is the, right now, that is the superintendent's report.
That's pretty good for off the cuff. No warning whatsoever. I think everybody in the room knows Jared, but for those who might be tuning in for the first time this year, this is Jared Stanton, our new finance director. We're all very excited to have him on board, and so far, everything we've seen has been tipped up. So, looking forward to a strong year. Correspondence, I have none. So we move on to our goals for twenty eighteen, nineteen. And assuming people have looked these through, I think rather than reading them, are there specific items anybody would like to talk about? Some things we might like to adjust? Joanna was good enough to put this together from some things we talked about at the last meeting. By no means is meant to be definitive.
Yeah, kudos to Joanna for putting all this together from a bunch of our comments and everything. I think she pulled it together real well. I had a couple of comments. I don't know who's taken them down or who's going to, maybe I will. But I just had a couple of little things that jumped out at me. One was in this superintendent support and evaluation. We still had a lines with entry plan district goals and school committee goals, but I think the entry plan was really last year. Just think that's, we don't need that anymore to relevant. Let's see. You know what, under communication in number two, where the second bullet point is coffees will be posted meetings. And I just, that caught my eye because I think in the past, our coffees have not been posted, we have not posted them as school committee meetings. We've always had only two people so that they were not a meeting and not a deliberation. So I just wanted to point that out and question, are we doing something differently this year or?
Which, I don't mean, this would be.
That was under, so in community engagement and communication on the second page, D, down under number two, which is continue to offer regularly scheduled school committee coffees. The second bullet point says coffees will be posted meetings and at a minimum be advertised by school announcements. So, I don't know, I just.
I suspect that that's a term of art that got put in just as we're going to post that we're having a meeting.
Right.
Rather than the phrase posted meetings for open meeting purposes.
Just wanted to be clear so we're not setting the wrong expectations that they will all be actual official open meetings or anything. Okay.
No, I think we will continue with two or no more than three if one of them is a carolot member involved in the discussion. Doesn't mean that others of us can't be there.
As observers, right. Okay.
Then read something like coffees will be publicized.
Right. I think it would make it more clear, just that they'd be publicized. So cultural competency, I think she wanted some feedback on clearly it's open. So I'm going to skip over that for a second just to go through my little comments because I had some comments on the middle school points, not surprisingly. One is that under key actions and progress, it says by November two thousand and eighteen, but we may not know until December whether we get MSBA funding. So I just thought that should be changed to December two thousand and eighteen. The second was about educational visioning, which actually was something that we had looked at doing last year but have kind of moved focus elsewhere. So that point is no longer relevant. And the last two, which are invited, if invited into MSBA funding process versus if not, I just thought we could be a little more specific because it's if invited into MSBA funding process, the step would be request funding for a feasibility study at town meeting. Pretty specific, that's the next step if we get funding. If not invited into MSBA funding process, I would suggest something like establish next steps and, oops, where are we? Just establish next steps and the timing thereof if not funding, something like that. So I guess what's there is probably fine. It could get more detailed based on a discussion that we will have a little bit later about the middle school process and what we do if we don't get funding. So we can always come back to that, but just thought we should make it a little more accurate.
Well, but the flip side is, um, that gives us latitude.
Gives us leeway, yep. So, so that's fine. Determine alternate next steps is fine. And if we won't leave as begin relevant next, that's fine. I mean, it's, it's loose. But we, we do know that if we're invited into the MSBA funding process, the next thing we have to do is request funding for a feasibility study. So, just thought we could be specific there.
Heather, would you elaborate a little more on the second bullet, your point about educational visioning?
Oh, sorry. So, last year, as we were in the process of this, we were going to, we were starting to look at kind of an educational visioning process that was part of the long-term planning for a middle school facility. We ended up kind of shifting the focus because we were also doing the strategic planning district-wide. We didn't want that to be, I guess, do, you know, redundant. And on the middle school front, we started focusing more on the reconfiguration, which Justin is going to tell us more about shortly. And so we kind of shifted the focus from educational visioning to reconfiguration. So that was something that was a part of last year's goals, but it's not something we've carved out as a specific goal for this year.
So drop it in its entirety?
So I was going to say drop it. I mean, if it's something we want to look at, we could talk about it. But at this point, it's not on the plan, so I would say just drop it out of there.
And much of that's happening within other processes underway?
Really, it's happened throughout the strategic planning process. So I don't know that, I mean, we could always take that. And certainly as we start thinking about a middle, a new middle school building down the line, hopefully, we will want to, you know, look at our educational vision and be tailoring it to that. But this particular step isn't really, it doesn't fit into our timeline yet. At least it's not there yet. If it does fit in, we can add it in.
Yeah.
So those are my comments.
Okay. In general agreement with us?
Yeah, with the caveat that we need to come back to the cultural competency piece.
Right.
And I would think the dot, dot, dot at the end of superintendent would be, you know, provide the support to the superintendent as needed in expanding our cultural proficiency.
Really? Yes. And really, anything else that she might want to see in here? But right now, we can't do that, so.
So.
Other than that, I think they look good.
And I think if there, if you have other thoughts prior to our next meeting in two weeks, send those to Joanna and we can come back to this on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So, moving on. Angel is going to give us an update on special.
Yay.
At the row. On today.
See if we can warm this up. There we go.
Is my teacher voice?
Yes, exactly.
So, it's day eight. So, I am here to just provide an update on the journey that we've made from last year to the beginning of this year. I think that probably one of the most exciting parts about the start of the school year is that this year we have welcomed an early childhood substantially separate program, which is the first of its kind in the district. So we are thrilled to have this new cohort of students. It has already changed the vibe of the building, I think in such a positive way. We're well-represented here tonight, so maybe folks can speak up if they'd like. But it's just wonderful. It's been wonderful for all of our students, particularly the students who were going to come to us anyway, who were not in the program, to get to interact with and form real close, positive, authentic relationships with their peers in the community who they may not have otherwise had a chance to connect with. So that's been wonderful. Sarah Keller is our new teacher who is working in the program. We were thrilled and fortunate to grab her from New England Center for Children. So we are thrilled to have her on board. It's very exciting. Of course, you know, having it be a new program, we're learning more hour by hour, minute by minute, and making adjustments as need be. But it's been wonderful. Every day gets a little bit, gets a little bit better. We're just starting to working out the kinks. That, that's the truth. But it is fantastic work and it's super rewarding. And I think that it's, it should be part of our district-wide vision to keep as many students in districts as we possibly can and create more programs.
So I had a question. How many more students are now at the row than, let's say, a year or two?
Well, it's interesting. That's, it's hard to gauge because we went from having five sections in kindergarten down to four. That was something that was due to enrollment that was going to happen anyway. So we have brought, I think there's three students who would otherwise be going to Willard or Alhut who are currently in our building along with other folks who are already slated to come to the row. But it's a fantastic program and I definitely see the need. And I see more of a need across the district for us to provide a spectrum of options for these kids. And it's, come by and see it. You really should. It's pretty striking.
And this.
It's your invitation.
This provides the opportunity for them to stay here and not go out of district, right?
That's correct. That is correct.
I mean, that's a huge difference, you know, keeping them with their community peers versus sending them elsewhere is such a.
And the parents have been, I've gotten more emails thanking me and giving me feedback on the program just saying, you know, thank you for, you know, for hosting us and it's, it's our pleasure. It's not, you know, I feel like we, we are lucky that we got the chance to host this program and looking forward to, to expanding it as need be and watching these kiddos grow as they go through the grades. You know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want them going anywhere. So, we're just going to have to work out what it's going to look like from year to year.
And right now, it's K-ones. It's kindergarten and first graders, right?
So it's an early childhood. So actually, the way that, that with special education, it goes in age bands. So these are kids who chronologically could be in kindergarten, first or second grade. But developmentally may be at a variety of places across a variety of different areas depending. So, an example would be we could have a child who, whose chronologically would be a second grader, but as far as cognition skills could be functioning at a lower level.
Right. And so how do you, going through, do you, I don't even use the word label, but, you know, kind of mark each of them as a specific grade level as they go through? Or is it more kind of, because it's substantially separate, they're just in this program?
That's a great question. So what we do, with regards to this program, each child's day, while they do have peers who are receiving similar services, it's all driven by their individual plan. So that has been interesting to try to figure out how do you meet the very unique and personalized needs of child by child, but still maintain the cohort. I would say, you know, it took, actually, we trial these, you make the plans on paper, right? You know, you could observe the children and then in a preschool environment, you could even see them in summer school, or you could even have them as part of your current kindergarten class. And some of our, some of our students came from our own building. But until you actually get to meet them and they come out of their shell and you get to become really well-versed in their IP's, get to talk to the parents, do what happened over the summer, it's something that's constantly morphing and changing. Which makes it a challenge, but keeps us on our toes.
That's great.
I wouldn't have, I was there. They must have done some collaboration with parents leading up to this because we're fortunate to have parents who are willing to join us on this.
That's correct.
Journey as we've started.
Those were great. I mean, that, most of the work, the laying the groundwork for the parents accepting the placement proposal started back in the spring of last year. And then we had, just starting to lay the seed. Because that's when, you know, as a parent, if you have a child with a, with a special need, you start thinking three years ahead and go backwards because that's when you have to start doing the work. So, you know, if you're a child who is in an integrated, in an integrated preschool who's, who's got, you know, services and they need you already from day one, start thinking, what's this going to look like in kindergarten? What's it going to look like by the time it's first grade? So those questions were already in our parents' minds. It was just given the option of having an intersect option. It involved attending, me attending the transition meetings, going IP meetings at the integrated preschool, answering questions, hearing what they wanted, and working closely with Jessica Murphy to put together something that we thought would meet the needs of everyone. And again, is it perfect? No. It's constant, it's constantly cheap. But we have the right people in place to try to, to do, you know, whatever has to be done to make it successful. So it's, and I have to say, the support of the special education office has been fantastic because, you know, if I call them, you know, which I did at the end of last week and said, you know, I need a piece of equipment tomorrow, like, can you turn that around for me very quickly? Because, you know, it didn't occur to me that I need a certain stools for, you know, for this child, and they've been doing it. So it's fantastic. So, we are, you know, finding out what we need as we go. Same with curriculum resources. Nope, this is not going to work for this one. It's just like you do with, with any child. It's just, just expanding our options for, you know, options for inclusion because the students are not attending specials as a cohort. They are going with first or kindergarten classrooms. So that's been, it takes not just, you know, the special education teacher and the team. It takes the music teacher. It takes everyone's willingness to say, this is worthwhile. This is good work. This is, you know, this is what we need to do. And I'm sure, you know, as we expand, that will, you know, more need for learning and possibly, you know, training will reveal itself and, but we're prepared for that to happen.
So this new program, sort of, when did you first start to work on it? How many people were involved instituting it and how many hours?
Oh.
It's just ballpark, yeah.
I would, a ballpark. It's hard to quantify. I'll tell you when it started. It started when we had, I believe there were, there were students who, this happened actually, the work of this started over a year ago. Because we had, so over a year ago, so it would be last year at this time, we welcomed students from the integrated preschool who were, happened to be slated to go to Thorough anyway, who, when we looked at their service delivery, you know, for some of these kids, we thought, yeah, no problem, piece of cake. We're used to this. And then there were other instances where the needs were more personalized and visualized where we thought, you know, so the question was, where do we go with placement? Do we look at and add a district? Do we try to, try to keep them in? And, and my, my feeling was, well, let's just try it. You know, if we try it and it doesn't work, at least we've, you know, made that attempt to provide the service in district. If it doesn't work out the worst, then we, at least we know we've done everything. So it started with that. The jump from kindergarten to first grade is pretty significant. So there were kids who we knew we could hold on to for sure through kindergarten. And then it was, what's that? I don't know about first grade. Let's, let's look at, let's, you know, reevaluate the child. Let's look at the testing. Let's look at the results. Let's see, what would be, what would we be recommending? So while that was happening simultaneously, we had some students who were coming up from the integrated preschool who, the preschool staff and Jessica Murphy thought, you may have a little cohort there because you've got some kids who you're already trying to figure out what you're going to need for them. And then the kids coming right behind would be good learning partners for some of these kids. So, because my, again, at the end of last year, I'm thinking, are we going to be able to hang on to this kiddo or are we not going to be able to meet their needs? So this program allowed us to, so it's been two years in the making, did not realizing it would ever happen. You know, I think a lot of, I thought it would be a great thing if it happened, but the stars seemed to align where we had the parent buy-in, where we had a space in the building, where we had service providers who are willing to, to try something that maybe they haven't done before because we, you know, said we have not provided this level of support in a while because, you know, the service delivery is more and is substantially separate. That's what makes it that kind of a program. So more hours. So an example of that would be that the kindergartners typically at, on Thursday afternoons go home. Ours stay so that they can have time to work on academics and receive their services. So it's been a long time coming and it took, you know, parents, team from the preschool, my service providers, just everyone saying, okay, let's, let's try it. Let's try it. It, I, it will be great. It will be great. We are working on it. It will be great. Is it perfect right now? No, it's not perfect right now. Are we still learning them? Yeah. Eight days in, we sure are. But, but we have, we're enthusiastic.
That's natural and the fact that everybody said, let's do it and let's try it is great. That's, that's fabulous.
It, it is fabulous. And that's, you know, these children are in our community and they deserve the chance to remain in our community. And so we delivered for that. I hope we can do more.
I, I know that you, you know, you worked really hard on this and I appreciate that. And I think we, we are developing a sense in the district that this is something that we, you know, we want to do more of. And we, I agree with you. If we can keep kids here, it's, it's win, 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 win. Everybody wins in that scenario. And, and it's, you know, I mean, we, we struggled mightily with some margin things a couple of years ago for preschool because of, you know, we were keeping kids here as we identified and prepared for that. And, you know, we're, you know, move this to the elementary schools. And then, you know, the work that's going on at the high school and elsewhere in the district. I mean, this is, I hope that this is something we continue to hear about here, but more importantly, that happens in the schools. Because, you know, it's just, it's vitally important.
There are upfront things that you don't think about necessarily, which, so when you think about, you know, financially, long-term, without a doubt, savings, on the financial front. But when you think about upfront, there are little things, you know. we need a stool for the restroom, we need, you know, a different swing on the playground, we need a different, you know, more structure. There are things that, you know, we didn't know that we didn't know, and that we are figuring out. However, you know, dollar per dollar and scheme of things and trajectory, um, the setup costs to get this up and going are tiny compared to the savings of an out of district placement.
So you're in the throes of implementation right now.
Yep.
And, uh, and you're finding new questions you have to answer and new resources. Knowing what you know now, do you anticipate next year, would and should look similar in terms of size and scope, with it simply more stable, or would you see any fundamental changes that you'd recommend?
Well, I see us, our, um, being more equipped and to anticipate things that we didn't anticipate now, so we'll know about, you know, the things we didn't know about now, but what's gonna, I think what makes the program is, first of all, have establishing it, and then it's a chicken and egg situation. We need, we need to continue with our relationship with the integrated preschool, and with, with families who have young children, who have IEPs, you know, partner with, um, early intervention, students who are at home receiving early intervention, because without the child, it's hard to justify the program. So we have to make sure that, that families in Concord are aware that we have this program, that we have this option, because many parents of, of special needs children find something that works and then stay there. Um, and we want to make sure that they know that, that we're an option. So, as long as we make sure that there's awareness about the program, that it exists, then we'll be sure to have the clientele. I would love to see it expanded. Once, not yet. Not yet. Um, but I, I do think that, you know, we, we will not have a hard time filling this program out as time goes on. We just have to make sure people know about it.
And it supports the whole district. As you said, there are kids who would be at Willard or Alcott, but they're there, so this is for kids anywhere in Concord, not just in the Thorough.
That's correct.
And would ultimately this, is the vision that there would be services available at each elementary school that might be slightly different because of the different needs, rather than trying to have duplicate programs at each school?
I think that eat, the, in order for the, for this to be sustainable, the program should be built, built around the population. So, this program is for a unique profile of child. There are other children with unique profiles who are in other programs out of district. For example, um, there are students who attend, um, who receive social emotional behavioral supports, that's their primary disability. Do we have enough students to justify having a program like that? We'd have to audit our, our students to figure out, children with language-based learning disabilities. So, depending on your critical mass within your profiles, I could see potentially, you know, once we know who are, we need to know who our folks are to figure out what type of a program would, that they, because they're the drivers. They're the drivers. It's not a catch-all program.
What's the
That would be easy.
But you'd be bored.
I'm never bored.
There's almost other kids. Sixth graders in your mother. The, uh, what's the engagement of any of, uh, let's see, back inside of this?
The, it was initially at the, at the kickoff, I mean, we're just starting. I imagine they'll be, they'll work closely with us to help us get the word out. Um, but they worked closely with the integrated preschool to advocate for this, the creation of this program. Um, and I think that allies will probably be on it all year to say, hey, what's going on over there, what's, you know, happening at Thorough? So I feel like it's my job to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students in the classroom and making it a really strong program. That's my focus.
These are exciting initiatives.
I don't want anyone to get hurt.
And dynamic, uh, as you're pointing at, so it's, um, we need to be prepared for that from where we sit. Um, and, uh, you know, I think you will find support for helping to move this forward as judiciously as we can.
By the time the dust settles, like maybe in a couple months, I think that this will be, uh, hopefully, I want the program to be a jewel, you know, in our school. I think that we're, it's something that I feel proud of already. I know that, you know, folks in my building feel as tired, but proud, um, and we just need to figure out how to, you know, get into a groove. It's good work.
I know you've had, we've got some faculty in the audience, I, uh, if it's okay with you, if any of them
Go for it.
wanna make any comments about this, we'd be happy to hear from you.
I get, just going through this fast, I have that class tomorrow.
Hey, uh, just when you were bringing, there were nodding heads in the back of the room.
From a kindergarten teacher perspective, um, the, the special ed teacher, there's a great communication with, um, her colleagues in both kindergarten and first grade, which is really special to me.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for all.
They love music.
Clearly a team effort.
Excellent. Thank you, Angel.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, Justin, you want to join us again for the reconfiguration discussion?
Good evening again.
Thanks for not displacing us.
The glare is, oh my goodness. Um, so effectively, I, I, we need to have, I guess we're having two conversations. We're gonna first talk about the reconfiguration, um, how I believe that may move the middle school forward for just a, hopefully, a handful of years, and then, um, the need again for a new facility. Um, so we'll start with the reconfiguration. Um, so it is still the plan of the middle school to reconfigure itself, um, and to turn PBD into an all sixth grade building, and it turns Sandborne into an all seventh and eighth grade building. Um, I've run some numbers, um, there was some talk, I wanna say winter of two thousand seventeen, of possibly putting this in place for this current year. Um, it was the membership, um, the teachers, who offered buy-in to the idea, but did ask us to slow down a little, um, to really just consider, you know, all the details, and, you know, attention to detail that a move like this needs to take. Um, we have a reconfiguration, a reconfiguration committee, um, of about seventeen teachers. We're gonna be meeting monthly, um, the first meeting is in a few weeks. Um, let's just pretend, though, that we did open the doors this year as a reconfigured, um, middle school. So, we opened the, the doors this year in the current configuration with three hundred and twenty-four students housed at the PBD building. And we had four hundred, we have four hundred and eleven students housed at the Sandborne building. So that's seven hundred and thirty-five who are currently enrolled at Concord Middle School. Um, if we opened this year as a reconfigured building, I don't have the current numbers of what sixth grade would look like, because they're current fifth graders. Um, however, we would be opening this bill, or we would be opening Sandborne with four hundred and eighty-one students, um, which is seventy students over what we have right now. So, the conversation of the reconfigure, uh, reconfiguration has always been space at Sandborne. Um, you know, we're all of a sudden, um, you know, I'm listening to a presentation made by my colleague, Angel, who's talking about special education programming, that, um, I'm so interested in, and there's a, you know, great, great need to have that happen at the middle school. But, you know, one of the things she said as a, as a pre-direct to, you know, having a program, any sort of specialized program space. In a reconfiguration, we do have all of a sudden some space at PBD, I think that's a good conversation. Um, but again, opening up Sandborne with seventy more students is a, um, small concern that Karen Baker has made, and so has, um, her membership. Um, right now, um, it would be tight. You know, right now, part of the reconfigure, the re- reconfiguration, or just the fact that we have two buildings, um, you know, we have, uh, teachers bumping into each other all the time. We have tremendous amount of shared spaces, which makes it, um, you know, very difficult and problematic to deliver a full curriculum study. Um, we don't necessarily have teachers on carts, and we would do everything, you know, do everything we can to avoid that happening. Um, but again, when a teacher is in his or her classroom, looking to prep, um, their materials and their space for a class that might be coming in in a period, um, right now, the current practice is, you know, in my walk, um, another teacher with a study. That's again, already in play, that's already in practice. Um, and would continue to be in practice, which speaks to, again, the conversation about five minutes, about a need for a new facility in the course. Um, so again, I just wanna highlight that if we opened right now, it would be seventy more students housed at the Sandborne building. Um, I believe the MSBA, or there's some percentage where you never wanna have more than eighty percent occupancy in a building, um, you know, to really try to house a full program in the study, and to limit those conflicts of spaces. Um, again, the reconfigure, reconfiguration, uh, grants us many opportunities. Um, one of them is to really have Concord Middle School students identify as Concord Middle School students. And for the first time in history of Concord Middle School, um, my wife can attest to this, uh, she takes great pride in, you know, being from PBD, um, and not the town of PBD, but the, the building. Um, you know, and we still have some of that. Um, and, you know, I wanna honor the work done by former administrations and, you know, the current staff, teachers and staff, you know, of how well two buildings combined to really form a community. But when we have seventh graders housed together in one building, and we have eighth graders housed together in one, one building, they form an identity of being a Concord Middle School student. I also wanna share this a little bit about the RTI, which is Response to Intervention Programming, that we have going on, um, in both buildings, and have the configuration of having half of six at PBD and half of six at Sandborne. Same thing with the other grades. Makes it problematic to run those special sections of RTI programming. RTI programming, um, is, RTI is supposed to be your gatekeeper to special education. Um, it allows you to deliver interventions without a student or family in special education. It should be alive, um, at a secondary level, at a middle school and a high school. Um, it should be also responsible for keeping our special education numbers down. Our special education numbers right now are very high, well above the state. Right now, the current practice, um, let's say if I have an RTI group of students of like five, um, happening in sixth grade for English at PBD, and I have a RTI group at Sandborne, sixth grade at PBD of four, you know, understand the fact that there are two groups running, um, each in its own building, and when we reconfigure, that could be a group of, I forgot the two numbers, but like eleven, which is very responsible. Um, it makes a lot of sense, and also frees that teacher up. Um, you know, I come from a district that offers enrichment opportunities opposite your intervention blocks. Um, so there's many opportunities that are gonna be gained by the reconfigure, reconfig, reconfigurment, um, of the two buildings. Um, it's just, we are going right into a feasibility study, um, in terms of the facility at Sandborne, and we should have that information to you, I would say, by our second meeting in October.
You're saying a feasibility study of this reconfiguration?
Correct, yes. Um, again, focused on the Sandborne physical plant, um, and housing, you know, again, if we opened this year, we would be open with four hundred and eighty-one seventh and eighth graders at Sandborne.
So is it fair to say you'd need more modular classrooms?
Um, that might be your request that is made. Um, I do wanna restate, though, that we have three classrooms that are currently occupied, occupied by the CASE Collaborative Program, that won't continue, will not be the, the CASE next year. Um, so, you know, that's one of the things where, you know, I think when this was a study done three years ago, um, you know, CASE still being in there, I, I'm not quite sure, I wasn't part of those conversations, but I don't think they actually thought of, you know, recouping those three classrooms.
And will CASE be moving to PBD or elsewhere?
Well, um, so that's, that's problematic, um, and so is, you know, any specialized program that we want, we might build ourselves, um, because whenever you're building a special education program, especially within the public school walls, um, it's not gonna be a, necessarily, um, a sub-separate at a secondary level. Um, so, you would always wanna build a program at a secondary level, where students, when they're making effective progress, which is what the law calls for, that you're immediately able to kind of phase them back into the mainstream. Um, and CASE does that right now. So we have CASE students who are phasing into, um, the mainstream. CASE is a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade program, that because they're housing a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade building, they can mainstream into our classes. If they move to PBD, you know, the only students, of course, in the CASE Collaborative Program that can mainstream in would be the sixth graders.
Things to think of, that's.
Every, every time we think we have a good idea.
There's another hmm.
Any other questions about the reconfiguration?
It sounds like clearly there are challenges, but it also sounds like, from discussions, from your experience, from discussions with teachers and students, that it seems like the benefits of this certainly outweigh the challenges, as long as we can make it all happen, we'll just.
Yep, yep. I know this was, you know, honored in, in prior presentations of the reconfiguration, but, you know, the due diligence has been done many times over, um, including visits of those communities that have an all-sixth grade building and an all-seventh and eighth grade building. Um, I do know both sixth grade houses, the house at Sandborne and the house at PBD, are already so excited and putting plans forward, um, in opening an all-sixth grade building. Um, you know, it, my life just changes tremendously. You know, I was working closely with, um, Officer Scott, our school resource officer, um, and just talking about the assembly that we're gonna be sharing, um, about the Alice that we have in place. Um, and that assembly looks different for sixth graders than it does for seventh and eighth graders. So there's a lot of potential, um, and there's a lot of excitement that we have. Um, I've only been through one, um, building placement from fifth to sixth grade, and I will absolutely state, I would rather not deal with any of that ever again. Because the building placement, um, is a family, community, neighborhood, you name it. Um, my email was, um, on fire during those years.
And I can tell you, as a parent of a current sixth grader, who just kicked me out of my seat, but we'll leave that there. But as the current sixth grader, who just went through that building placement, as compared to a student who went through it a couple of years ago, it was a, it was much less of a big deal this year even, because at least the sixth graders, they, you know, they might have been disappointed being separated from some friends, but they could say it's only one year. So, already, just knowing that's coming ahead is helping, at least diffuse, at least from the kids that I've seen, some of that anxiety. So it's nice that they have that to look forward to.
Yep. I tried to offer that perspective to some families.
It just didn't sink in with everybody, but I heard it at least. It sunk in somewhere.
So, what are the, one or two of the biggest challenges to the reconfiguration?
Um, again, the, the facility at Sandborne, um, the size.
Yeah.
Yep, and again, just, um, you know, right now, actually, another one too that I did not offer is the number of traveling teachers. Um, it's something that I really wanna try to capture, when we just talk about how broken a two-building model is. But I can speak a little bit about that in even the reconfiguration. Believe it or not, the reconfiguration actually adds to the cohort of teachers who travel. Um, right now, my department chairs teach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and effectively, my department chairs can be housed in just one building, in just their classroom. But now they're going to be part of what I, you know, proudly, you know, with a badge, where, like a traveling educator, bouncing back between, on both buildings. Um, and again, I'll probably restate this in just a few minutes, but when you're traveling, you're not at your best. Um, and, you know, the students, I think, sometimes see that, um, and you always are feeling, feeling like you're not necessarily, um, again, at your best, not a hundred percent. So I think the fact that we're gonna continue to have traveling and actually increase that cohort, and the facility and the facilities at Sandborn are two things that we have concerns about.
What about scheduling? I know that there is talk that in order to do this, we'd have to rework the student schedules somewhat to make it all happen. What does that look like and what does that do?
Well, it just so happens that we need to rework the master schedule committees.
Schedule committees, there you go, good timing.
You know, so again, I have about seventeen who are part of this committee, this reconfiguration committee, and then I have about nineteen who are on master schedule committee. The two are meeting in the same week and a lot of that work is going to be done in concert with each other. Because again, after facilities, after coming back to all of you and presenting what we might need at Sandborn, you know, we do have to point our ship to a master schedule. Again, though, one of the positives of the reconfiguration is because P V is, is smaller and can only house a certain amount of students who are pretty much at occupancy at P V, our sections and class sizes are smaller. And I find it tremendously problematic that I have a sixth grade science teacher at P V and a sixth grade science teacher at Sandborn. The, the Sandborn sixth grade science teacher has, you know, this is not an exaggeration, between fourteen and eighteen more students, which is almost a whole nother class. That is gonna be cleaned up in the reconfiguration. So that's a massive, you know, if you're putting a pros and a con was together, that's a massive pro. You know, the curriculum is the same and I think Kristen Herbert and the department chairs do such a wonderful job of making sure effectively, both sets of students in both buildings get the same access to the curriculum, but it's just, it's different, you know. I can't sit here and say it's not. The facilities cannot evolve in there, it cannot be more different. You know, the, the, you know, it's such a fascinating study in, you know, why does P V just have this small community field? It's the facility. It's fascinating. And we're gonna, you know, recapture that with an all-sixth grade building.
I think it's, it's clear that this isn't a panacea for the building issue.
Not at all. We'll keep repeating that.
And I was nervous, if anything, the building issue was sort of delayed the potential for this happening. But we've always, I think, the committee in general has always felt it would be great to have sixth graders in one building. And when you, you know, you think, we've got three elementary schools and we, you know, we split those kids up going from fifth to sixth. And the way we've been doing it is they're split up for three years. And then we bring two cohorts of kids from Concord to the high school and the Carlisle kids and probably some, some new Echo kids. So, you know, we're, we're constantly changing in a world of, where we're, we're always worried about anxiety. We are creating anxiety just by the dynamic of the way we've, we're set up. And I have seen firsthand the effect of a sixth grade center. My son went through a sole building, sixth grade. And it was the second cohort of kids to go through that. He just graduated from high school last year. And the, I think it's palpable, the difference in the cohesiveness of those grades as they went from their seventh and eighth in a different building, but together. And then together to high school. And, and I, I think it, it has an effect on the social emotional activity of those kids throughout the entire balance of their secondary education. So it's, to, to implement this is a big challenge and hats off to all of you who are working on it. And, you know, hopefully, we can do what's needed from our end to make that happen. And, you know, if and when we have a new building, you know, what we're learning in this process may very well transfer to that in some design aspects. If we decide that we wanna keep a substantially separate sixth grade. You know, we, we wanted all that now as we're prepping for, so there, you know, there, there are all kinds of reasons to do this now and work our way through the challenges, both organizationally and financially and because ultimately, it's gonna be the best thing for, for us going forward on a number of fronts.
I don't think it's lost on the school committee or the community in large that the appeal of the home base program and the arguments for the reconfiguration overlap quite nicely in terms of identity, affiliation, belonging, stability, comfort, reduced anxiety, emphasis on academics and social. And I'm glad you mentioned the traveling demands because I think those are considerable and perhaps not well-understood. Living out of a, out of a sack between two buildings, which some teachers have to do and have to look prepared, even though they're crawling out of car, watching minutes, not tens of minutes, but minutes to pull off their day, the, the stress is had by those teachers too.
So it probably means we won't get rid of the time warp that happens on home, our world.
The same one time.
Yes.
You know, in all seriousness though, the, you know, what stress that places on the master schedule. Effectively, you know, we have full-time teachers who are traveling that we have to build in all this travel time. So, you know, we are not using them to their full capacity because when you travel from Sandborn to P V, I, we need to place in that a, a period in between. The reason for the Sandborn time, of course, is because we are able to have anyone, including myself. Every day, I start at eight fifteen real world time at P V to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Then I get into my car and I drive to Sandborn, which is seven minutes behind, to do the Pledge of Allegiance there at, you know, eight twenty-two, but Sandborn time, it's eight fifteen. So we are able to have staff go from P V to Sandborn without any time in between. But every staff that's doing that is always going back. And the amount of time that's lost and the amount of money that's being spent on these, on the staff that are, you know, on paper, from a salary standpoint, we're, we're supporting them in a full-time way, but they're not teaching full-time and we're not getting them that full capacity. You know, I sat down with an art teacher at the end of the summer and we both looked at each other and said, you know, here we go, you know, and I'm effectively back and forth no less than eight to ten times a day. It is nothing that I could have ever been prepared for. You know, when everyone asks me, are you ready for this, you know, you get the whole two, two-building thing, right? I said, yeah, of course I got it, no problem.
Sure, no problem.
I undersold it, you know, I remember, I shared this with Lori, you know, I had to get my brakes done. And the mechanic was like, you know, what type of driver are you? I've never seen brakes in such bad shape. And I effectively, you know, shared that I'm back and forth, I'm taking this point eight mile trip. Anywhere between eight and ten times a day, okay, that's good. But again, you know, of course, thank you for mentioning that because, you know, I really wanna honor those teachers, you know, who feel so excited to walk into P V and deliver a lesson at the same effectiveness as they just did at Sandborn an hour later and they forget some of their materials. And, you know, our teachers are perfectionists and they're, they're specialists and, you know, they're at the top of their game, but they're not allowed to be because the conditions that surround them, the conditions that surround me are very much less than ideal. I don't think I will ever be the principal I was in my former district until we have one facility. I sat with the students who interviewed for our vacant or recently vacant assistant principal job and time after time after time again, I heard them describe the position as the assistant principal at P V as effectively the principal of P V. And that took me back a little because that's not the relationships I ever enjoyed in my eight years prior to coming to Concord. So from an administrative standpoint to a teacher's standpoint, you know, the new facility is something that is more than needed. Fiscally, it's going to save, you know, so much money, salaries, facilities-wise, I think you all know that.
That's the perfect bridge door, next topic.
To the next item.
Don't go anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere.
I didn't mean to bridge, I was just.
Do you wanna do this, who, how are we?
I'm, I'm.
Is your engagement?
I'm jumping in for the next one, yeah, we have a, oh, Erin, you got it there for me, thank you.
Thank you, Justin, for the.
You're welcome.
Yeah, but definitely don't go anywhere, cause this is a discussion.
Here I am.
And we need you for it, clearly. So I'm basically gonna back us up a little bit to do, and do a quick review. Some of us have heard this, and I apologize, multiple times, some people have not, some are new to the committee, so I'm gonna back us up a little and, and just get us all kind of up to the same point of where we've been in this planning process for a theoretical hopeful new building at some point. As most people know, we created a facilities planning committee back in all, in my timeline here, but almost two years ago. And I chaired that committee, so I've been involved with this the whole time. What we did is we commissioned a study to look at the building and figure out where are we, where were we, but where are we and where do we need to go. So this is not the whole thing, but I'm gonna do kind of a quick high level of the work of that committee, the results that came out of it and where we are and where we can look to go forward. So I'll do a quick review of the charge, the review of the status and conclusions, et cetera, a proposed timeline, and then this is all for discussion. So the charge of the committee, first was preparations, that's pretty quick. Phase two was conceptual master planning. So what we did, the point was to evaluate the existing facility and its needs to estimate the cost to maintain the current building for ten years. That's really important, obviously, if you're gonna talk about building or changing, you have to compare it to, well, what if we don't? So we needed to look at, can we and how would we maintain the current buildings for a while, we use ten years? Compare the options and related costs to transforming, as in renovating or building new, and then recommend preferred options. That committee, the facilities planning committee, came and recommended options back to the full school committee here. That all was completed, although the deadline was November two thousand seventeen, it was completed six months early even, we were pretty efficient. Phase three is another, another story because of the fact that it's somewhat dependent on MSBA funding. So we'll get into, to all that we went through, but basically, in terms of a preferred option into detailed plans, that's really a feasibility study and we've been waiting for further feedback and, and another answer from the MSBA on funding, which we should get later this year. So let me go back to the review of the situation. The high level, which Justin has just been telling us about, but the summary version from this committee and everybody involved is that there are three main themes that we're dealing with. One is just that the conditions of the buildings are deteriorated, deteriorating continuously and obsolete. There are so many examples of it, I won't go into details, but it's very clear. The two-campus configuration, as Justin was just talking about, is an issue in and of itself. I know you could go on for hours and I'm gonna bump it back to Justin in a little while and he can give us even more color around it, but it's both inefficient, inefficient and very expensive. We do spend an extra half million dollars a year, at least, that's at least what's documented on extra, things to do with the travel time, extra personnel, extra supplies, extra planning time, all kinds of stuff. It's at least a half million a year that we are literally throwing away, so we'd like to get out of that situation. The overflow status is just not sustainable. P V, for anybody who wasn't aware, P V was opened as an overflow campus to the middle school in nineteen sixty-eight. So we've been going at that for fifty years now.
But, but, it has to be an elementary school.
What, and built as an elementary school, yes, built as an elementary school, never opened as one because that wave of kids had grown up so much. Opened as overflow, it was never meant to be permanent as a middle school. So fifty years later, we are having this discussion still. And then just the community aspect, the third one, as Justin was talking about, it really does create a struggle for the school as a community, to create a sense of school community when you're in two buildings a mile apart is, is clearly a challenge. So the questions that we posed to Feingold Alexander, who's the architect we worked with for a year, were, one, in order to remain in the current buildings for ten years, what would it take to ensure an appropriate educational environment? Two, what are options and estimated costs for either a significant renovation, expansion or expansion project? And three, what are the options and potential costs for an actual new building project? That's what they took us through. So first, looking at the existing buildings, I promise not to take you through all the lines of these and you can't see them and it really doesn't matter. The point is that this was, this is a snapshot of the things that would need to be done to, this one, the Sandborn building, in order to make it a sustainable building to continue to educate in for ten years. The grand total at the bottom, as you can see, is over twenty-one million, that's one building. You go to the next one, we look at P V, slightly smaller building, but even more needs. In order to make this a, a building that we would consider sustainable for ten years would be almost twenty-six million, twenty-five point nine. So you put those two together and we end up with a ten-year maintenance bill of over forty-seven million dollars to keep two deteriorating buildings going. Probably it's not too much of a spoiler to tell you that by the end of this project, our recommendation is not to do this. So that, that's where we stand though, on don't do anything other than maintain and keep these buildings going for, for ten years. So the conclusion, whoops, is that we need one facility, a single campus for Concord Middle School that meets national and common core standards, we don't feel like it's there right now, and it will serve our students in the future as well as today. That's something really important that we talked about a lot in this planning committee. We need to be talking about a building that will keep us going for fifty years, not just the next five or ten. We wanna unify the school building into one building that will lower operating costs, allow the functioning of the school to be more efficient overall and facilitate that more cohesive school community that we'd really like to create. So that's the direction we wanna get to. In terms of the options, there were several things that were examined, explored. Although there are models at the top here, don't worry, there are no official plans or anything out there. What we looked at were just kind of conceptual ideas. The first one on the, the one on the left, existing condition is just, as we talked about, keep the buildings going and the price tag for that was forty-seven, but when you add on, you know, potential soft costs and other, other costs, it was up over sixty, almost seventy million. Option two was a slight expansion, basically adding on the minimum that we would possibly need to create enough space for educational plans going forward. This came in just under sixty million, again, these are very rough estimates, but they were, they're estimates in terms of the ballpark figures we'd need to put into something like that. Option two was a more significant expansion of the building, keeping the, the section that would have the gym and auditorium, because those wouldn't necessarily be as, as well-covered by MSBA, but then building new on the side of that, that's in the sixty million dollar range in terms of an estimate option. Then there were two options for three. Three was built new, three A is according to MSBA specs and three B would be with some extras. The reason we did that is because the MSBA doesn't actually consider an auditorium a necessity for a middle school and we think that Concord might consider it a necessity. And the gym specifications for a middle school are actually smaller than what we currently have at Stan, at Sandborn. And again, that's something that we feel a community might feel strongly about. So three A was exactly according to MSBA specs, which we need out there to, to understand. Three B was if we built with MSBA funding, but added on things that we thought the community might want or demand, knowing that we would have to pay for those sections off. And that estimate came ironically enough, at about the same range as keeping the two buildings as is for a while, somewhere about sixty-eight million. Again, these are very rough numbers, cause we're just looking at the bar charts here. Again, these are very rough numbers, because we're just looking at the bar charts here. So based on that, the recommendations from Feingold Alexander, that's again, from the architect, um, were that there are two viable approaches. One was option two, which is to work with the existing Sandborne building, saving the auditorium and large gym and music area, and building a whole new classroom wing onto that, that was one option. Um, the other viable approach, knowing the community, in terms of their recommendation, was option three B, which was to build a brand-new middle school, um, including both the MSBA specs plus the, the other areas that Concord would likely want. Um, so, those were their recommendations, and really coming down to it, these were the two considered viable. They, they did recommend that a new building would likely be the most efficient for us, given our needs and where we are and everything. Um, but that was the, the, the architect's recommendations from them. So, up until this point, I have kept this all, I didn't change anything on those slides since I created them, what, over probably a year and a half ago? So that was all based on the study that we completed over a year ago. Um, I'm now gonna throw in a few more recent updates, um, and just to show you how fast this moves, since I finalized this presentation thirty-six hours ago and posted it, there have been more things to add to the list than P-B-D even. Um, but this is, this is a very high-level starting list of some things that are coming up in the buildings that will need to be addressed. The system, septic system at Sandborne is deteriorating, it will need both short-term and long-term help. Um, our first fire drill in the fall at Sandborne failed, um, despite some testing over the summer. Not all of the students got out of the building when they should during the fire drill, so we ended up having to keep basically a live watch system going until we could get people in to replace it. Um, again, the, the one that was added since last night even, uh, we now know there's moisture in the floor of the P-B-D gym, that's gonna need work, I mean, things like this just keep coming at us. Um, but both buildings are continuing to deteriorate, um, and it, I don't wanna sound like we are neglecting them, but at the same time, like the situation that we were in with the high school several years ago, we're not gonna be putting a lot of money into them right now if we think we are potentially building soon. So we're in this funny area, we don't wanna invest too much in these buildings, so we're not doing much proactive maintenance. We're really doing only what we have to to keep them safe environments for the students. Obviously, that's first priority, we'll do what we have to to keep them a safe environment. Um, and I know Justin can give us more on, you know, the, the electric system has problems. The active boards, when everybody uses the active boards at once, they blow a fuse, and the teachers can't present it back to school night.
They blow a what?
They, a fuse.
A fuse?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we have an electrician. Yeah.
It's a breaker, right.
You know, so I'm on the phone with the electrician, you know, today about, you know, coming after school, and he was like, no, I need, you know, gotta come between ten and twelve, and, you know, I, I, you know, and, and again, the cost of just keeping, you know, our active boards on, um, it's just, it's just time and time again, our facilities are failing us.
We, we just implemented a new Wi-Fi system throughout the district, which was fabulous everywhere except the middle school, because of all of the problems implementing it there. So, it, it's the constant flow of other things. Um, I'm gonna bounce it back to you in a sec, Justin, I only have, oh, the, um, the reconfiguration, you already went over it. The only point I will make on this slide is that we are excited, as we said, about the reconfiguration for next year because of the improvements to transition in school-wide sense of community, and I just, but I just cannot reiterate enough, the new configuration will not solve our core challenges of deterioration and inefficiency. I mean, it's, it's clearly a great short-term Band-Aid, but a short-term Band-Aid. Um, and these core issues are things that we still have to, to deal with. Um, before I get into the timeline, let me bounce it back to you, Justin. I know you gave us a bunch of color already, but there's, there are more that you wanna add about this situation, because you are living it day-to-day.
Sure, Karen effectively, uh, came into my mind to, to think about the outside, uh, pieces of Sandborne as well. So I think this reconfiguration is only going to, um, really promote the facility inside and outside. Um, if we drop another mod, um, we have very limited parking anyways. Um, and we're just talking not parking for our back-school night, um, or our musical, we're talking about parking for our teachers, um, which, again, are gonna be, you know, more teachers are gonna be housed at Sandborne. So I know parking is a, a great subject, you know, all of you.
We love talking about parking.
Something about the high school, um, you know, so, there's just, there's more to explore, um, which, you know, we, we will do, but when we're, you know, at this time in a reconfigured building, you know, I honestly believe we're gonna be providing even more stress upon the facilities. Um, and, you know, this is, this is what a, a team of architects will do, and a, and a building, you know, committee will do. You know, they'll look at it all, you know, we're in Concord, we, we wanna make sure our outdoor learning spaces, you know, are just as, um, meaningful and impactful to our curriculum as our indoor. But we also have to think of safety, and we have to talk, you know, you drive, drive by Sandborne, and it happened today, how about this for irony? You know, so, today at dismissal, the middle school students were able to thank our Concord police, fire, and first responders. So I had over twenty-five police, fire, and first responders, great, right? They all parked so illegally, you know, that cars were, the, the, uh, cars were bumping into each other, the, the buses couldn't really get in, um, and they really had first in with us, you know, of students, especially on an early release Tuesday, that don't all take the buses, and are darting, you know, across that busy road, and, you know, just, the cars that are all parked, you know, there's so much that are gonna, that's going to be overemphasized at Sandborne. Um, and I feel like fifteen minutes ago, you know, Karen was thinking, I know she was thinking, you know, about parking and, you know, and the, the safety of our students. Um, it's really in plus, you know, with the current configuration in the buildings that we have.
Thank you, so that's, I mean, it, and also your comments are in, I mean, I think, feel like, given this discussion and the last one, it helps give us even more of a feel of what it's like to live this in two buildings, and it's clearly not sustainable. Um, so I'm gonna jump forward to the timeline, the quick review of timeline, the timeline is that we created this planning committee two years ago, we submitted our first statement of interest to the MSBA in April of two thousand seventeen, um, presented this whole study to the Concord School Committee in June. Last December, we heard that we were not invited into the MSBA funding process, now I.
It was December twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, oops, sorry, my bad, you're right, twenty seventeen.
Good, okay.
Good, thank you. Yes, December twenty eighteen is still much more hopeful than that, wow, sorry about that one. Um, December twenty seventeen. Um, just in terms of insight on that, we, we did hear from them that we were certainly one of the top contenders for funding. The MSBA knows that our buildings are in bad condition, and that we need to do this. Um, however, they had too many people with too many needs, and so, we lost out.
Did they invite Concord to, we, or?
They certainly encouraged us to resubmit, yes. Um, in fact, they said you should absolutely resubmit, we, you clearly have a need, we get that, we understand it. It's just a matter of how many districts with needs come in and how many they can take.
It, it's not an invitation process.
It's, right, right, anybody can.
Anybody can.
But I thought there was a communication that was pretty solicitous, discussion back and forth, though.
They encouraged us to resubmit, certainly, so we resubmitted this past year. Um, uh, we, and, and, and that's really where we are. Um, right now, I wanna talk about, well, actually, sorry, in the spring, the plan is established for the reconfiguration, kind of our short-term solution. Um, now we wanna talk about next steps. So we should hear December of this year about this last statement of interest and whether we are invited into the funding process. Um, I wanna go through kind of the if A and B scenarios, and then this is where the, the, we do need some good discussion here about what we wanna do. Um, if we are accepted and are funded, that's great, it's very clear, we have to be off and running with a feasibility study right away. Um, in order to do that, we need funding at town meeting in April to do the feasibility study, which means that, um, we actually have to have a warrant ready to submit for town meeting, probably before we even find out, we're gonna start working on it soon, we have to have one ready to submit, um, for funding in case we are accepted and are gonna be moving along with MSBA. So, um, we will be starting that process soon, and we'll be bringing a warrant to the school committee, um, to vote on, so that it's ready to be submitted for town meeting. Um, if we're accepted, great, we put it in, and the road is pretty clear from there. If not, we also obviously have some discussion and thinking to do. Um, one, one thing that I would like to suggest right now is that we consider moving forward with a feasibility study anyway. Now, that's not to say we consider building the building without the MSBA funding, it's to say we consider doing a feasibility study anyway. Um, there are advantages and disadvantages to doing this, obviously. The advantage, the clear advantage, the reason we would do it, is that we are getting to the point where if we have to wait another full year to get this process started, we are getting really in the hole on these buildings, and it's gonna be further out until a new one, and it is just, it makes the educational experience here more and more difficult. We need to start moving on this process, because we need a better environment for our kids to learn in. Um, so that's the advantage.
So Heather, uh, how much approximately is the feasibility study?
A feasibility study, I don't have a number, but I'm thinking in the hundred thousand range, it's somewhere in that.
One to, I'd say.
Ballpark, okay, hundred-something.
Yeah.
Not this one.
Yeah, um, so obviously, the, the risk is of doing, obviously, there's money that we have to put into it. Um, we are waiting for feedback from the MSBA to make sure that they would be comfortable with that, with us having, you know, if we don't get funding, um, with having a feasibility study already in the process before we submit the next SOI. Um, and primarily, the reason you would usually wait until you get their funding is because the funding comes specific to a plan, either to build a new building or to expand. Um, I think at this point, that it's clear enough that we're gonna have to head towards a new building rather than expansion, that it's pretty clear we should move towards a feasibility for a new building. But again, that's, that, if we're talking about advantages and disadvantages here, that, that's the risk that we would take on, is that, um, maybe they would look at our schools and say, no, you should just add on to one of them, that'll be fine. Um, that, you know, we, we might take exception to that and have a discussion about it, but, um, that's kind of the discussion that we wanna have here. So, again, either way, we have to create a warrant for a feasibility study. The question then, that we would have to have agreement on, among this committee, is if we don't get invited into the funding this year, which we hope we will, um, do we submit it anyway and try to move forward with the feasibility study? And so that's what I'm kind of, that's what I'd recommend to propose, but I'm looking for feedback.
I would agree, I would agree with that approach, and I think, you know, one of the things we're looking for feedback from the MSBA on is, um, how would they view that? You know, the sound they're concerned, oh, well, if you do that, then does that indicate to them that you're gonna go along? And no, I think it would be that, you know, we, we need to do this, this is a critical stage. Um, we will do it signaling that we're serious about it. Um, so when you're considering this in fiscal, in twenty nineteen, if it comes to that, um, you know, we would be one step closer to being able to engage, which won't be the case with some of the schools that they offer funding to in that round. And, uh, you know, that may work for them rather than against them. Um, but I think in any case, we would be indicating, you know, it is our full intention to be back in front of you in fiscal year nineteen, and not fiscal year nineteen, fiscal year twenty, um, if, uh, if we weren't selected this time around. Um, and like you say, we'll, we'll know before, we should know, um, before, uh, the warrant closes. But I don't see that the, the warrant is particularly different regardless of the MSBA result. It is a warrant to do a feasibility, for money to do a feasibility study. Um, I think we have to do that, I think, as we're seeing with, I mean, every day, I wonder if the phone's gonna ring, and we've got another problem at the middle school, um, all of which cost money, and all of which, right now, have to be funded out of the operating budget. Um, and as you, when you look at the detail on this list, and I can make it available to anybody who would like to see it, um, there are big-ticket items on there that, you know, we will have to be capitalized. Um, and we will need to begin to capitalize those, just to be able to use the buildings. Um, and some of them will probably have to be done regardless of whether we build a building, um, because we need to inhabit these buildings and keep them safe for kids.
For a few years, though.
And so that, you know, the sooner we, sooner we, we get to a project, and we initiate that, and we, we get the community's support for it, um, the less likely we have to go too deep into this list. Um, and, uh, it's, you know, we're there, and we started, we're, this is two years old. Um, and we haven't, you know, we've Band-Aided some of this stuff, we've done some of it, um, under our capital expenditures. Um, but, you know, even, even those projects end up getting pushed aside because something more immediate arises. And, uh, you know, some of the, is, some of these things, if, if they come to pass, are gonna make the building, have the potential to make the building unusable for a period of time. And, you know, we are not in a position to deal with that, we don't have any extra space. And it's not, you know, there are no empty school buildings in the surrounding towns, you know, as much of a hassle as that is. Um, but that's what you have to do when you have that kind of problem. That's not who we are. Um, so I think we, you know, this, we need to move forward as if we're gonna get funding from the MSBA. Um, and if we don't get it this year, that we are that much more committed, that the community is, we've given the community an opportunity to get behind doing the feasibility study, indicating that this is something they're interested in, um, so that when the MSBA is considering it next year, um, they know that.
And also, just for reference, we are continually communicating with the MSBA, especially with a bunch of these updates, so that they know, um, the situation's getting worse by the month, you know, the fires have failed, the, the gym floors is having problems, all those things, things. We are updating them so that they know that, really, the deterioration unfortunately is, is just, it's getting faster, it's accelerating. Um, and that's, so, we are getting to a point where we need to move soon on this, I think.
I think the, the facts and the community sentiments are pretty clear, the facilities are not serving as well at the present time. I appreciate these slides, and yet I would also add, I think, that we can make a much stronger case for the educational value of a new facility. I think this is strong on efficiencies and fiscal considerations, which belong there, but I think it might overshadow the educational, uh, performance that we wanna be able to achieve in those towns. I think we can do much more there. Uh, at the risk of, uh, letting you know how uninformed I am, I don't understand how we could save the auditorium and the gym, how could we operate, uh, a, a middle school if we were to do demo on that site? We have no place to push those students, do we?
Highly inefficient.
Yeah, well, it'll be, I mean, that's, was part of the discussion we had, uh, in our, uh, committee. Um, you would need, you would need probably a balance of modules while the construction was going on. Because you would have construction going on, basically, and what is now the parking lot?
We'd be, yeah.
And then part of the.
Dozens of units from FEMA. What it would look like.
No, it, it is not, it is not.
It's not.
Yeah, I, I don't see.
The building now is.
Which is why, even of those two options, build new, in my opinion, and in the opinion of the architects also, it just makes more sense. It's clean, it's efficient, um, we could build, basically the way they laid it out, we can easily build in water now, this is Sandborne Fields.
Yeah, exactly.
Keep the schools running until we open the. Keep the schools running until we open the new building and then you do demolition afterwards and that's where you create the parking and the fields and everything. But if we build new, it's a very clean, efficient, cost-effective process.
The design that the, and I'm forgetting the name of the architect.
Fine Gold Alexander.
Fine Gold Alexander, just roughed out and then it was not, is, is basically, if you know the, if you know the site, it's sandborne, there's a hill behind the school that goes down to another field. And it incorporates a tiered approach down that hill so that you've effectively got a three-story building, but from a street scape would look like a one-story building. And so it's set back ways. I don't know if that's where, you know, God knows if that's where we'd end up, but that's...
One can see why an architect would want us to envision it right there.
And that, you know, that would be the least impactful to existing operations, but it's, it's going to have an impact and we went through it at high school and it has an impact.
Let's, let's go a little bit deeper on, uh, the potential downsides of a feasibility study in 2019. Let's really peel that apart.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do, that's what I, that's what we need to figure out right now.
Because I think we can all argue that information is, knowledge is essential and we can, uh, have no trouble arguing that this is inexorable, we're going to do it in this town at some point. We need, it's not going away.
Right, right.
Everybody knows it's inevitable, it's quite a question of when and it's a question of when MSBA.
Yeah.
To me, the only risk of doing it in the coming spring, the coming summer is, is does it send a message to MSBA that's different from the reality? I tend to doubt that, but especially if we indicate that to them clearly.
So along those lines, uh, imagine that, uh, we were to not, uh, get the invite this year, but in a year hypothetically, does a feasibility study become stale?
No, I don't.
No, it's a, no, 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 the whole point is that it would be ready to go. Right, exactly.
I mean, it puts us one, if we were to get, if we were to wait and we were, if we were to wait until we were accepted, um, and let's say that's next year, then, you know, we have delayed a full year, uh, any opportunity to, to move to a new building. Um, we have effectively on the, so we wouldn't begin a feasibility study until the summer of 2020. And, you know, we're halfway through the decade before we've got a functional building. Um, the, uh, so that, you know, and, and, you know, there are, there is a limit to how long a, uh, an award from MSBA lasts and there are people, there are towns who are unable to get the community to fund the balance. And, you know, I think to the degree that the community can indicate to the MSBA that, you know, this, these dollars will get used, um, if you award the money, um, you know, they're in the business of building, kind of getting schools built. Um, and, uh, you know, so they, they have to factor those things in in their decision-making. Last year, I think that, uh, all of the schools that were funded were level four schools. So worse shape than ours. I don't know what the success rate is as far as funding goes for, for the projects that they've earmarked, um, in the past three years, but, um, you know, they, they are, they seem very, in discussions with Lori, Lori's doing the conversations, but when I talk to her about how those have gone, it sounds like, you know, they're, they're encouraging conversations. I mean, this is the director, so it's not, it's not the board, but, um, you know, she certainly isn't discouraging us from our continued interest in MSBA.
So to get back to your question, which are what are the risks of moving forward with a feasibility study this year? As Wally points out, one could be sending an inaccurate message to the MSBA.
Or go along with messages.
Right, if they think this means, oh, they're going to do it themselves, they don't need us, um, that doesn't help us. Like you said, I think as long as we are communicating clearly with MSBA, which we are, we have a good lot of communication, I don't think that will happen. I think we can communicate very clearly, we're doing this, you know, if you're not going to fund us this year, we have to assume that you're going to fund us next year and we're going to, you know, get the process started because we can't wait any longer and, and that will be our message. I mean, I think the only other risk, the other risk that I see potentially is that if, is the concept that we do a feasibility study for a new building and then they come back, you know, a year later and say, oh, well, we'll fund you for an expansion but not a new building. I think that's highly unlikely.
Well, that's historically what happened in high school.
Right, right. And it didn't end up that way. So, I mean, just to, we need to put all of our potential risks out there, but, um, welcome back Lori.
Hi.
How's Carlisle?
Carlisle.
No one mentioned the takeover.
That's right.
What did, what did?
Never happens, man.
The students didn't do anything with this.
I mean, I've been picturing you texting me.
And we won't talk about how much educators have to travel. We don't have to.
As I'm sure you've gathered, we are in the discussion about doing a feasibility one regardless of outcome of the MSBA.
Still very much hoping that this will be an irrelevant discussion that we will get the funding this year, but given that the answer to that question of what do we do is easy, we have to spend time on it if we don't get it, how do we move forward? So, um, I had recommended that we do, you know, ask for funding for a feasibility study anyway. Wally voiced support for that. Court was just saying, now if we're going to think about that, let's make sure we look at all the potential risks of doing that. Let's, let's make sure we're looking at any potential risks. And where we are so far is the potential unintended, an unintended and inaccurate message, um, if the MSBA thinks that that means we're just going to do the whole thing alone. And what I said was, I think you and MSB have a very good line of communication.
Yeah, I actually have an inquiry into them on that kind of, you know, to be totally transparent on this line of thought and get some feedback ahead of it. So I haven't heard back from them, I might probably should reach out to her again this week, but, um, that was the thought, was to just ask the question and see if there was a negative from their perception.
So we should get more on that. And the other one being, you know, in, in theory, if we did a feasibility study for a new building and then next year they came back and said, well, we'll, we'll award you funds for an expansion but not a new building and we've gone in the wrong direction, you know, that, that's a risk that we need to take into account. Personally, I feel like given all the data in front of us, that's unlikely.
I think honestly, we'd have to have a serious conversation over expansion.
Right, if they think expansion is...
Those schools was the better, best idea. I don't see that fiscally that makes much sense.
Yeah.
I mean, if you expand, uh, Sandborne, you still have very old sections on the...
Yes, and, you know, I'm sure I missed some of the testimony here, but it's so glaringly not what it needs to be. I don't see there's a way to get it there in any fiscally efficient.
I don't think we would want to go forward with an expansion somehow anyway. So I think that kind of, but again, in, in the spirit of, we want to throw out any potential risks to this plan here, any other concerns?
So, I'm wondering that how, uh, long a feasibility study is actually an effective tool to do something? In other words, is it two, three years, five years, eight years? What's its life? Yeah.
Do you have an estimate?
Excuse me, um, I don't, probably...
It's not typical to do them without knowing what you're doing next, so it's probably a hypothetical more than a realistic.
Although I would almost say we are getting to a point where we need to be building a building in the next couple of years. You know, if, if the feasibility study expires in two years, well, so be it. I mean, I think we need to be building before then anyway. I, I almost wonder if that's even relevant.
Knowing that whenever that starts is four years out at best, I mean, what we're living in there right now, you know, Justin and I are a year in and there's noth, you know, there's so many challenges on a day-to-day basis that aren't what they should be, that I think, right, you know, the potential for major failure of some massive infrastructure kind is, it, we're on borrowed time and I think a couple of major systems there, we're working now to get septic photos and really share that with MSBA. I, I think that list could be long. You've got the study from before, all those things they spotted are still aging as we speak and a massive failure really is a possibility at any point. So it, at some point, we're going to have to decide what to do here, so obviously we want to do it with MSBA support.
Other questions, concerns, thoughts?
Just information, uh, we expect to hear from MSBA hypothetically or potentially early December.
Yes, likely Thanksgiving. Their meeting is December 13th, I think, off the top of my head. We would expect to hear, last year I heard from them right after the holiday, Thanksgiving holiday, um, because then it goes forward to their board on the agenda.
And we have a warrant deadline of usuals.
Well, the deadline is January, September, or four, but we usually...
Final on Sunday, draft articles in December. 10th, we've asked to extend that to the 12th because our meeting in December is the 11th. So it's right all in that same time frame.
So I'm not advocating it, but I'm simply pointing out there is a window there, is there not?
There is.
Yes.
And I think, you know, one of the things that we need to determine is, does the warrant look any different in either case? It may be the same warrant.
Right, or the same stuff.
Um, and so, you know, our discussion really is, do we put the, do we, and we can always put the warrant in and not move it.
Correct.
Um, do we put the warrant in regardless? And, I mean, yes to that. I think there would be another yes if we had five at the table.
And we don't have to decide for sure and it's something we'll, you know, we'll vote on it in December when we approve warrant articles, but it'd be good to get a feel for our direction here tonight.
And, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, we've got two months before we're, for, I mean, under the guns to do the warrants.
So this is potentially a, another step forward in a now multi-year effort.
Right, it's definitely...
To go to four.
Absolutely. Justin, any other thoughts from you in terms of all of this?
It, it does seem like, you know, the committee as well is not to, you know, necessarily move forward with the 3A option of keeping our auditorium gym, but I do want to honor the music program and the current space we have for the music program. While a reconsideration is very exciting for my music teachers because, uh, again, things that, you know, I think our community hadn't really thought of until attending a concert, you know, a concert is often one of the first times the sixth grade band from P D, the sixth grade in Sandborne come together. So they're very excited to have a sixth grade band that can rehearse, you know, three times out of a six-day rotation every single week. The space though, you know, we're continuing with a great idea of putting more stress upon a, a building that is sandborne, um, that, you know, again, is not at all meeting the needs educationally. So the music teachers are excited, but they're not quite sure even right now where they're going to be helped. So, you know, to include that, and I think it was included, you know, in the three areas of possible, you know, staying, just doesn't make any sense.
That is included in the idea of 3B.
Yep.
Right, exactly.
The, the space that's allotted by the MSBA profile, uh, doesn't give us that and it's, it's, it's that, the auditorium, the size of the gym.
Yeah.
You know, the, this, you know, the gym, oh my goodness, um, it's, it's big enough. I have to say though, the, the auditorium, and again, you know, Karen just needs to get out of my mind, um, you know, the heat...
Good luck with it.
The heat of the last couple of weeks was such a, you know, I, I know we had a little fun, you know, with the motion, that passed, I, I need to...
Dare I ask what it was?
For any season.
Of course, of course. No surprise.
They got it, so...
The gavel went downward.
Yeah, I'm sure it did. I guess we need to rework her some bunch of transferring chairs.
Let's take this part away.
Jason practiced the gavel, it striked today in my office, it went down. Um, you know, all kidding aside, um, you know, the community, I think, really thought the reason why we postponed our, um, what was supposed to be our second day activities was because of, and all school, both buildings combining together outside, cookout and barbecue. That's not the case. That was icing on the cake, you know, that was just kind of a, a throw-in. We could not get our students in the Sandborne auditorium because effectively that space runs six to seven degrees over what is outside. We have no outside air access to that space at all. And one of the musicals that we had, um, in April, it was a little bit warmer than a typical April day, um, and, you know, we, you know, went to the science classrooms, got thermometers, started in, and again, it was anywhere between 16 to 8 degrees warmer than it was outside. So again, it just continues to, you know, Sandborne, any and all of it, is really providing harm to, you know, our educational value and to what the teachers have to endure every day. You know, we do thank Lori and Jared and the facilities crew for bringing in fans and helping us move some of that warm air around. But I'll end with this, you know, last spring during a warm spell as well, um, we were short some nurses, I had a nurse who was on medical leave, I mean, of a nurse that felt ill, um, so we had a nurse from the high school who had to come down and spend the day at P D. And similar to me sharing out with my family and, you know, those who live in town, ah, the two building thing, you know, she knew of our facilities, but she lived it for a day and she pulled me aside and said, I never, never imagined the facility being what it is, you know, by just driving by, you know, spending a day at it, she was just taking a side. It was on that day that we decided, um, to install air conditioning in both my nurses' suites because, you know, we had students, ethnics students, you know, who would come to the nurses' office and really there was no sense for it. You know, so these are the conditions that day in, day out, the teachers and, you know, the great people at Sandborne P D have to endure.
And we're fortunate to get all those days in because there are communities that, that's not as honest. And there's no indication that's going to get better going forward. So those, you know, not only are we, uh, for, on, on, on air-conditioned buildings we're dealing, not just for snow down, but heat issues. So, you know, yet another piece of this example.
All right, well, it's not, just to wrap up this part of the conversation though, it sounds like from those here at least, the idea of submitting this request for a feasibility study either way is generally supported and now Wally said he supports it.
Barring any, uh, information that was suggested, it puts us in jeopardy, which we're not hearing now.
Right, yeah. Certainly keep our ears open for any reason that teams that between now and then, there's no doubt, you know.
I think it also, it also, you know, begins a discussion we need to have with the community.
Yeah.
To go to town meeting with warrant article for a feasibility study and...
And maybe offer tours through the middle school buildings so that they see what it's like.
On a 90-degree day, please.
Yes, exactly. All right, thank you guys for going through all this with me.
Thank you for the...
Living it, so let me know if there are any follow-up questions at any point. Justin, thanks for joining us for this.
Thank you for support.
Your insight and details on this are really helpful.
Thank you. Um, so under budget discussion, Jared?
Yeah, so in your packet right now, you see FY19's variance report, uh, that's as of 96. I wanted to give a variance report for this meeting, uh, for the, for the conquered budget. So this is typical of what you saw a couple of weeks ago, but this is the actual numbers. This is, this is as of 96, uh, by 1,000 function. As you can see, it's remaining balanced, everything right now is in balance. Uh, we, uh, we have 31.6 million currently in encumbrances. Not everything obviously is encumbered, uh, I would say... I would say about ninety-five percent of our staff, if not a little bit more, is encumbered, and most of our budget is staff. All of our tuitions, for the most part, are encumbered. So this is a typical report that you'll see monthly. The one that you'll see quarterly will be by one hundred function. So right now, there have been some transfers, but nothing outside of the, the one thousands to one thousands, two thousands to two thousands, so that will not show up on the sheet. Any questions on that? So just talking a little bit about FY20, if I could. So today I met with Justin this morning. We went over the middle school budget, we had our first meeting. And then we had our first high school budget meeting tomorrow morning. I'm gonna be meeting with all of the chairs, and those Lori, at the high school to give them a presentation on the zero-based budget, you know, what our expectations of them, work with them on some deadlines. And so we're hoping that's gonna go pretty good. And then we're planning on meeting, we're hoping to get in a little bit earlier, but right now I am scheduled to get into the middle school on the eighteenth with their chairs. Again, hoping I can get there a little bit earlier, but we're gonna go through pretty much the same process with them. So, so it's exciting. We're on pace right now.
Central office.
Central office, I've met with a number of members of the central office, Kristen, Jessica, Ian. I'm meeting with Brian tomorrow, and, and Peter is the sixteenth. So, so we're on, we're on pace. We have, we're gonna be presenting the budget, I believe, on the thirteenth of November. So it's creeping up, both budgets. But feeling confident, and, and everyone's really, so far, they've bought into this, and I'm pretty excited.
He acts like they got a choice.
They keep telling me, I know.
They are, the, the, the energy's really positive, people are interested and invested and creative, and, yeah, no, they, they're very engaged, so.
That's great, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any questions, or Jared, or Lori?
No, I wanna also say just, and maybe I should've said this in the chairs' report, but we did have our, I should've said this, actually, we had our first budget subcommittee meet, not first, first real discussion in, in a budget subcommittee meeting recently. And the detail that you gave us in each of these areas and about how you're building it from zero and everything was so helpful. So I, I mean, you know, the question, I feel like I have a great understanding already of your steps and your process and where it's coming from and where it's going, so that, that's really helpful already.
Okay, action items. Can I have a motion that the Concord School Committee vote to accept a donation in memory of Betsy Wood in the amount of a hundred dollars for the enjoyment of the children of the Thoreau School?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, just to remind you, Betsy was a noontime lunchade at Thoreau up until three weeks before her death at age eighty-five last spring. So, really treasured member of that community, and just great to see someone acknowledging all that she gave to generations of kids.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I...
Aye.
opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Here, for the next ones, I will move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept a donation from Mr. Eric and Sally Ann Lindpeter in the amount of a thousand dollars to the Alcott Elementary School.
Just with gratitude, I don't have any more details.
With gratitude, yeah.
Have a seat. Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
And I move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept a donation in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars from the Joan Pittler Memorial Fund to support the CMS Summer Academy.
Second.
Again, I don't have any other details.
With gratitude.
Gratitude. It's an amazing place because this is just what happens.
Fabulous.
Just a point of information, is this part of a summer school?
It's a portion of, yes.
That's what I thought, yeah.
This is the portion that targets the MEKO. Kids for some summer support.
All in favor of the motion?
I...
Aye, opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
And I, oh, wait, I moved the wording from me.
Okay.
What do I need the wording for?
Yeah, I didn't give you wording, that's all.
No, that's okay, I had it somewhere here, I just can't find my right window.
So, uh, okay. So, just, late this summer, the middle school cleaned the balcony storage space and gymnasium. All of the items have been stored for multiple years, whether they're outdated or past their functional life. Please consider declaring the following items surplus. I'm not gonna read them because they're lengthy, but I assume we've looked through these.
Yes, we have.
Since we've had it for a couple of days. So I, can I have a motion? We declare the items on the list dated September tenth, two thousand eighteen from Dr. Hunter, surplus items.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.